Brian Venema.
Here.
Christine Papp, here.
Monica McHugh, here.
And Marita Key, maybe joining us online. Sandra Gerlach, here. Townskeeper.
Yes.
Mike Burke.
Here. Here we'll have a approval of the July twenty-one, twenty, twenty-five amendments. Is there anybody to go over?
Only second.
Okay. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Yes, we have a public hearing, but we have nothing scheduled. Right though.
Right.
And you have anything from items of the public? Uh, so there's nobody here. Do you have anything on Zoom?
Nin is present on Zoom. Do you have anything, Nan?
No, just listening.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will move on to Laura.
Hey.
Thank you for being here, Laura.
You're welcome. So this is the, the outline for this, what I hope will be your final work session, so we can move on to our public hearing and so on. So Becca and I have, have arranged this in a set of uh, recommendations, which the first several, I would say, maybe the first three are pretty simple, straightforward, we think. Uh, we're also trying in the format, we're using less of the red line, um, although it is in some of the packets as a backup. Trying to try out some new ways to do things when we get to the public hearing. So that being said, our first amendment is one for chapter four, the Board of Adjustment. And this is something that Becca initiated because we've had a couple of two or three cases where, uh, the special exception, which is, if we're proposing be called this conditional use, had a specific timeframe of improvement of Board of Adjustment. And for various reasons, people haven't been able to get started on a house or a project, or they're not finishing within a timeframe. And so we did, did talk about this, but, uh, Becca did some research. And our recommendation is that right now, in order to get an extension, you have to go through the whole process as if you were applying for it over again.
Right.
And there's a public hearing. So what we found is there's, there's a recommendation here that that would be all well and good if it was kind of a major project or there were some issues. But for things that are pretty straightforward, um, the person's making progress or supply issues or an illness or accident, something like that is delayed down and put they're really still, um, going to be able to make the project move forward.
Corps of Engineers.
Waiting, waiting for a court.
And this happened.
Yes, absolutely. That's another one. Something beyond the person's control like that. And so we're, we're trying to, again, try to use an administrative outlet to shorten things up like we've recommended for other things. And so that's what we're, we're looking at.
Have you talked to the Board of Adjustment? Are they okay with that?
We have not, because their meeting is next week.
Okay.
But we will.
Yeah.
Okay. So what this does is it would, um, mean less cases coming to them. Um, and when these cases came, how did that, when those two extensions came, they approved them?
Um, one is actually not, won't be until next month for the hearing and then
Oh, right, okay.
And then one, we have last one. And it was fine to grant them year extension. And they had contractor issues.
I, I'd be okay with it as long as the Board of Adjustment is okay with it.
Then. That sounds fair.
Because I think they should really have a say.
Human.
And.
Absolutely.
And we have been keeping them apprised of, um, sections, the ordinance, particularly on their their rules and regulations that they use. So we'd be happy to do that. And that's, that's what we had for the first one. So we'll, um, we'll be back next month and we'll know what the board thinks about that one. Oh, or Mike, do you have any?
No, no, that's not true.
That's why we can just take that as an advisement over to them. And that's what we did last time, chapter four, which is their chapter. Um, chapter three, um, when we were looking through chapter two, there's some regulations and sections, two point eight, two point nine. Um, this one in particular, I felt really seemed to make more sense to be brought into chapter three. The idea here is, um, that the the zoning ordinance doesn't stand alone. Reviews should be done in awareness and compliance with other county ordinances that may be appropriate and state and federal regulations. And so the idea is to bring that language into chapter three and broaden it from just a few county references to include references to Iowa code and, um, federal code, without necessarily listing them all, but just in general. Um, just as a, what I'm, what I'm trying to create here is as you're working through it as an administrator or an attorney representing a client, this is a guide, things that administrators got to go through or things that your, um, client is going to need to, or you as the advocate will need to think about. So basically moved the language from chapter two and then moved it into chapter three, kind of in a, in this in the procedural section where it seemed to make it good, was a good fit. And then broke it up into here, Jackson County. And then for us, well, the next page. And then the state of Iowa and the federal government. And I was able to find links that send you into Iowa code or Iowa administrative code, which are sets of rules that the agencies and departments use, and even one for federal regulations. So um, this remains more timeless. Uh, it's something that those laws may change. We haven't cited them directly, but we directed you directed the administrator, oh, here's a place where I can go and check on that.
So that way you don't have to change it in ours. We just, and they change it in their hyperlink and that's.
Exactly. That's good. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Sandra, for asking that question and finding out that yeah, when we, when we cite these things, just even specifically, and then they, where you're, they get revised, your ordinance stays, the client stays consistent. So that, this is, again, this is trying to make sure there's enough context and guidance in this ordinance that interpretation is consistent. And, um, and, and, and really takes into consideration lots of things that could be in play or might not, if you check them anyway. So, Becca, if you have anything you want to add on these. So any questions on that one? Does that sound all right?
Great.
Okay. So this next one is actually part of our outreach to other departments. That's been going on as we've been developing this, especially, um, not only with the county attorney's office, but Becca and Lori have done a lot of contact and conversation with the county engineer and with county health department about how these regulations interact with theirs. So for the development regulations, these are the charts that are in each of the districts that talk about minimum lot area, minimum lot width, setbacks from front, rear, side yards, building height, that type of thing. There are a set of notes in there in the current ordinance. Number one, that you see there, note one, in that first paragraph under discussion, that's the wording that's in the ordinance now. And the health department staff asked if we could add the language that's shown in red. Because what this does is here, we're talking about making sure there's enough area in the lot to, um, be able to have adequate sewage facilities. And she suggested we also mention that there are Iowa administrative codes, sixty-nine for private sewage, forty-nine for private wells, that would be a good reference. And so we're recommending that. Um, the second item, the county engineer, this was something that Lori Rowling had sent you before she retired. There is, um, some concern about when there are buildings closer to the road and the road is redesigned to be paved for there could be acquisition, um, and or right of way and that could include structures. And so the county engineer felt a thirty-foot setback along public roadways might be appropriate.
So here's my question on that. Typically on road right of way, the right of way extends thirty-three feet from center of roadway.
Yes. That's my understanding.
So the thirty-foot setback, is that, where is that from? Because that is not clear to me. Because when you're looking at the right of way, it's thirty-three foot from center line.
The right of way is the property line for measuring setbacks.
So it's thirty foot from the property line, so it's like, gonna be like sixty feet.
Okay.
From the fences.
That, that, that was my, that was my concern, was do we have this wording correct? So that it would be far enough back to make sure that we hit the right of way.
Right now, we do, uh, when we do the setbacks, we measure it from the right of way line. The right of way is an easement, we measure it from that roadway easement line. But, so your total would be the thirty-three foot from the center line plus the other thirty.
Okay. That, that's what I, I, that's what I wanted, wanted to clarify. Because when I read that before, it was like, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Technically, you all.
Yeah, technically you do, but it's.
So anyway, we, we understand.
Yes.
I understand.
Yes, and that would be another illustration. Um, so one of the, one of the things that, um, we also discussed though is we have properties that were planted before we had zoning. And, um, so we're, we're, we're doing a balancing act and we have alternative regulations. So one of the things we looked at is, the engineer says there are no future plans right now to pave any new roadways. So we thought, well, this probably should be done on a case by case basis. And that way the engineer can look at the property when it comes in. It comes in through an online permit system now. Everything that Becca gets, she showed me, it goes to the engineer, goes to the health department, it goes to whatever departments you're supposed to look at it. This would be the time for the engineer then to say, oh, yeah, that property, Becca's on a planned improvement that we're going to need to do a different setback. So this is one of those, again, this is a, a note that helps us remember. Check with the engineer. All, we always do that, but in some cases, there might be something special they need, they might be recommending. So in answer to, uh, Nin's question, we actually do have that defined in the definition section. And we also, um, actually have some information coming up in, um, one of the, uh, one of the amendments we're showing where we're going to address that. And I think that's pretty much what we do say. So thank you for that, yeah. The other thing we noted was that we had a current five-year, five-foot setback for rear yard that wasn't wasn't included. And so we added that. So if we, we can go to the clean version. Um, this is, this is what those tables look like. And then as you get down through all the different types of uses, the references to the notes are then to these notes here. And so this, this is the clean version showing adding those two, Iowa, Iowa administrative code references and then one, and adding the, the, the note seven about the thirty-foot setback. And so what, what we have here is just the, uh, A1. So here's the example. I mentioned we have alternative development regulations proposed for those buildings planted before we had zoning. And so their setbacks are much smaller. But again, as Becca scrolls through it, even for the alternative versus standard, the notes follow the same. They, there's one through seven there again. And so we would do this for all the, for all the districts. They're going to look the same. So we don't bother to give you all of them. They're going to, this would all, this would be consistent for all the districts. And we found that that input from the engineering department and health department made sense. And doing it that way is case by case. And then just for a quick look, the red line version shows you, we just made a few, just a, just a few little changes. But again, sometimes these these little tweaks we're able to do here are going to make it easy for, easier for the administration in this new ordinance. Are there any question, other questions or comments about, about that? See what's next. Okay, so, um, fences. Now, the regulations for your fences are fifteen brief. But we were asked to look at establishing regulations in general for fences and specifically for the R one district. And so that's what we've worked on. Uh, Iowa code provides for, um, what are called partition fences. Your fences along property lines, and there's a whole bunch of, uh, regulations and deal with that. Just for a reminder, this page, it can be, oh, no, sorry, I was, this is, yeah. So here's where fences are mentioned. We don't worry about them on farms. They're, they're exempt right now in R one. This is really your, that's your regulation there, hedges and fences in front yards, four feet, six yards, side or rear yard. And then there's references about fences for auto wrecking and junkyards. And then pretty critical one is this visibility of the intersections, um. And this is, this is actually language that we propose to be that's proposed for revision to meet the engineers. So there's not a lot about fences in here, so when you don't have a lot, and, um, you start creating some things. So for this section, this would be in section two point eight, where we have other types of regulations like this. The definitions are for fences and hedges. These are the, the reason is that there is a, the Iowa code for fences talks about fences, but also talks about hedges, and so does your current code. So things that we are addressing here is the visibility at intersections and entrances, placing, placement on right of way, placement on access and utility easements, and then the partition fences are regulated under Iowa code three fifty-nine A, and this is where township officials would come in. Um, we also talk here about, I mean, I can't put them, a survey, it might be needed if you're going to build on a boundary line or an access easement. Um, it's, since we're regulating height, it's a good idea to explain to people how we're measuring that. And so we have a description and then we have a diagram. Um, some of the other things we want to make sure happens is that fences are maintained. There's any damage to a body property during installation, it's, it's worked out. Barbed wire isn't really a good idea in R one, and electrical fence, if it's used, we'd really like to have a notice on it.
I said, Monica, what do you mean I can't put up electric fence in my residential area?
You, you could, I suppose.
Hey, I'm not familiar with Iowa fence law, and I'm reading this. So if, if my neighbor decides he wants to put up, I live in town and he wants to build a fence, I have to participate.
The, 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 town doesn't count. Town doesn't count.
But it says it right in, in town.
Yeah, and typically what happens in cities is, um, cities tend to, you, people tend to follow the city ordinance, not so much the Iowa code, but that, even though the Iowa code I think is an effect. I've read through some dissertations on this. It is definitely an effect for counties.
Okay, is that what that means, though?
So the right hand and the left hand rule. So the right hand rule is.
The country.
Which, yes, but if you've got residential in the country.
I'm not, this was in town. Are you, are you within a incorporated city?
Me? No, I'm just curious about this. Technically, yes, but the, the city ordinance usually takes over.
But if you're the city.
It depends on what city side.
And it depends on which city you live in.
So why didn't it tell you that? What, how does this apply?
It probably doesn't apply because we're dealing with unincorporated areas only.
Oh, it's, okay, I'm sorry, I missed, forgot.
Oh, that's okay. It's if there's a community that has zoning, that's, that's what you follow.
Okay.
If there's a community that doesn't have zoning.
That doesn't have zoning.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, I'm sorry. Then you're out of, you don't have to follow anything because this ordinance does not go into a city that doesn't have zoning.
Right, okay.
All the unincorporated areas, the county does not want to be regulating cities. So that's how it's written and we kept it that. Um, no problem. So where Lori wanted to, to really have some more guidance is in R one, which is where fences seem to be something that's can be problematic or come in more often with requirements. And so we've used that same language for current height and setback. And added in, by the way, you can't, totally impact, cannot impact the visibility of intersections and entrances. We created a diagram to kind of give uh, people a sense of basically four foot in the front yard, well, where's that? Where's the front of the house? Okay. What about the side yard, six foot, rear yard, six foot, six foot? And then partition fences on the jointing property, a reference back to that Iowa code. So a couple of things we're, we're doing here, which is what we've been trying to do throughout the ordinance, is to provide for waivers. Um, if a property has some slope to it, there's a way for the zoning administrator to wave the, the height to account for that slope in the diagram that's on the next page, kind of helps you see, use street grade for the, for the property slows down. Then you can kind of give it an effective, I mean, let it, even though the, the overall height might be tall. Yeah. So for fence permits, um, uh, we, we think we have fence permit. I'm not sure I ever got a clear answer on that.
So, so the, um, if you, if you scroll back.
Yep.
Can do that. On, on the electric fence. So right there, on eleven. I, along with many other of my neighbors, have a lot of electric fences. We do not post any notices about electric fences or their current.
They were exempt.
Right.
We're in one.
Provided, but if it's a, if it's provided adequate notices, oh, this is exen, okay. Or posted to warn the public at any time. I might be reading that wrong.
We can take it out. We can take it out. We can just stop it in agricultural district because it can.
I, I think you should because I'm reading this wrong. And I have, we have some problem neighbors.
Yeah, we'll stop it right there. And, you know, it actually is confusing.
Which I think it should be because we don't have this, and I can see them taking us to court for that.
No, that's fine. And if it's agricultural or farm use, we don't, I don't either anyway.
I think, I think we should just stop it there.
Leave it in the agricultural section.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, actually that sentence confuses things. So I've already crossed it out.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you for catching that. Yeah. So it's.
I, I have one question before we leave this part.
Sure.
So say you, somebody's got a two acre parcel all over the country and they're R one. And the neighbor's egg, can you have a wire fence between them, on barbed wire? Okay. I just want to make sure.
On the egg property, yep.
Okay.
For the farm exempt use.
Yeah, that's why I, I don't think that they're, I really, I think, yeah, I think we should just leave it at that because
we aren't allowed to regulate farm exempt uses, including farm fences. They're allowed.
Right.
And so they could be electrical. The other thing we can do is we can remove barbed wire, we can remove electrical and not worry about those two things at all.
That might be better.
Easier.
Easier.
All right. We like easy. It's not, but then at number nine, damage. That's okay.
I just think that would be better. I just.
That's great. We'll do that. Um, see, we were, you know, we don't have other questions. We wanted to talk about how we wanted to handle the permits. So we, we do have a fence permit, but I think what we use is a zone permit or accessory use form or something along those lines. For us, we're just going to call it a fence permit right now. This is how we're trying to explain it to people. So and if you're in an R one district, we would like you to submit a permit. There's no fee if the fences are compliant. The idea is really to help people understand, particularly in residential, particularly in R one. Make sure they know where their property lines are and make sure they know how to, we're helping them understand how high it can be and which areas of their property. Um, so we would still want them to go through the permitting process, but we wouldn't charge a fee.
I think you're going to have difficulties with this to begin with, in, in R one in the country. I don't think we've ever asked for a fence permit before.
No, we use an accessory use permit, apparently.
And.
That's the permit that's used.
But how many people haven't actually asked for an accessory permit for a fence?
Um, in the year that I've been here, I can think of two.
What happens if they, yeah, what happens if they don't ask for a permit and they just put it up? Is there any repercussion?
Depends on if my neighbor turns them in.
Good.
If it's compliant, but, and their neighbor turns them in, there won't be any repercussion if it's.
As long as it's compliant.
If it's not, then they.
Got to change it. This helps them make it compliant.
Yeah.
No, I get it. I just ask them.
So if it's compliant and they don't have a permit, that doesn't matter.
Yeah, really, because it doesn't cause anything.
Right. So then why is it a permit?
Yeah, that, yeah.
To avoid disputes that take us a heck of a lot more time. And if they require us to go to the Board of Adjustment or a court, it's, those are huge commitments of time on the part of the administrator.
Okay, so how many have we had where we've had disputes in R ones in the county?
Didn't, I didn't research this one.
Not.
I, I'm playing devil's advocate because if you've got, if you've got, you know, some of these residential, you know, areas out there, the R ones. Here's my question on that. So I'm trying to think of what they call the one like North Bellevue. Is there a covenant in that area about fencing?
Doesn't matter. It's not up just to enforce them or.
Well, this is what I'm getting at. This is what I'm getting at. So is this my concern is, is this a really big problem? If it's not.
Well, it was presented to us that it was. However.
So Mike.
We have a new administrator, so.
Right, so.
I'm going to sit back and.
And, and so my question is on this, is this really, is this really an issue?
I don't know.
And so I am, I'm going to play devil's advocate. How many complaints have we had?
Becca, do you, do you see this as being helpful?
In the last year that I've been here, there's been zero complaints. There's been two permits that I can think of. One went to the board of adjustment because it was going to be. Taller than the six foot due to neighbor issues. So fences really aren't. Much of a.
Me playing devil's advocate to you is, what's it hurt to have it in there? I mean, what do you?
Why, and why do we even, why do we want even have it in?
Well, so is it, so that if somebody's going to put a fence up.
They can look it up and.
They, 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 yeah, they.
By law.
If they're, if they're married, made aware they need a permit, then they also have access then to the. Requirements and they know, you know, what to do, so they don't.
Those would be the complaints.
And so this is, this is my point, it's on their property. Why do you care what I'm doing with my property?
Well, as soon as they think it's on their property, but it's really not, then we'll hear from them. However, I, again, I have nothing vested in this fence permit.
I know that, and I just, I just like. I was playing the other person about.
So did I. I did, so I did. But on my, for me personally, not, not even having a permit is fine. You don't issue that many. If we drop this section out, you've got a drawing. Or several drawings that provide how to measure height, how to do it if it's on a grade, where to put it on your yard. And to me, the pictures will speak to people. A little better or easier maybe than some of the writing here. I personally, I don't think the fence permit. For R one is needed.
Essentially, it goes to township trustees.
But that, I mean, this is, this is my point. Why do we care?
I don't, I don't, but I was asked to write it down, so I did.
Well, if it's in the county, as long as it's not in an incorporated area, it'll go to the township trustees.
Yes, yeah, which are one areas like Spruce Creek. Ranger Lake. That would go to the township trustees.
Some of them with associations may deal with the president association and.
Yeah, yeah, I guess it'd be association.
They're sort of like umpires on, umpires on a call. And I see them as umpires on a call, people running out. So if we didn't have that section, we would have, we would have the drawings. We have the process if they need to do something different, the dimensional requirements. Uh, we now have a variance process for that. We also have an administrative waiver. So you can add your fence up a little bit without having to go to the board and. You can work it out through this process with the zoning district.
But I mean, that's my, that's my other question. Why do we care that somebody has a four foot fence in front of their house or a six foot fence in front of their house?
For some, for some communities. Having a, having a fence that's lower in the front yard. Makes for better aesthetic in the, in the, particularly in the residential areas. It's really more about aesthetics. In residential, in R one, especially lots that are close. As opposed to a large fence, eight feet high. In the front yard, covering basically the house is like a building behind a fence. It's more aesthetics than anything else. Um, I didn't find anything really about law enforcement, too much more aesthetics. It is your current regulation?
Like I said, why do we care?
The aesthetics was the main thing that came up when I was trying to find that. An answer for it.
I, and, and that's, that's, that's my point. Are we? Obviously with junk yards, we're concerned with aesthetics. Why is the zoning board concerned with the residential area of aesthetics if it's not junked?
Because it's typically what is. Desired in most communities is that that fence in the front yard is not this big stocking fence, eight feet high.
Yeah, my, my concern, not so much for it, but somebody would put up a taller than. Normal fence, so I'm going to disagree with you. I'm for leaving it in.
If, if we were to send that to the township trustees, what would they use for grams to review that? If we take things out. They would use Iowa code chapter three fifty nine A. Iowa code chapter three fifty nine A has. Information about what constitutes a local fence, what kinds of materials it can be, that sort of thing, but placement of it. On the property line, um, is something that. We suggest that survey would be a good idea unless you know where your property line is. In my experience, we've got a few places where people put fences. On their neighbor's property, then have to remove them. So.
Dig a little further to find that information then.
Yes, or potentially shell out the money for a survey.
Unless Monica moves to strike this, I'll say we move on.
I, I know, I'll move the striker. And Becca, what do you feel about that? Do you want to have a permanent process or?
I, I know, I'm totally torn on both of them. It is nice having nice guidelines, but.
So you still have a, you still have the guidance, but the permit means you have contact with somebody and can work through it. You're not charging a fee.
We are.
Well, I hear you. Only just here, you wouldn't be, if their fence is really, then what this is, is it's helping to put their fence in the right place at the right height. There's not even a fee, the way this is worded. If you want to change that, we could certainly do that.
And there's the other thing too, it's compliant, so we're charging a fee.
But that's.
They're unlikely to fill out the form.
This, I think we should strike this. Yeah, it's, um.
Currently, we've been charging a fee.
But you're not doing a lot.
Right.
You're not doing a lot of complaints.
Seventy five.
But the way I understood it, the, now it's going to be nothing as long as they're compliant.
Well, that's just the proposal.
Yeah, that's what's.
Which. Probably if we do that better, because then we'll get more people.
Which actually think is what they're thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think, which would give seventy five hours to people so that they, yeah, so they do it right in the first place.
Right.
And this is the way some of the communities that work would do it, because they want people to. Think about where they put their fence, because it's easy to put it on the wrong place. Oh, it's on a utility set.
Well, then also if they put up an eight foot fence in their front yard and you say, well, nobody told me I couldn't.
Right.
It's not in there that we can't.
Well, and that.
If we have, if we have a fee and then with the process that says, yes, you cannot put an eight foot fence in the front yard.
Well, but most people don't, they never.
We're not dealing with most people, there can be the one.
Well, I, I know that.
You're talking about one, we haven't done one, now there could be one that actually does it.
So I mean, here's the, here's the issue. We, we really haven't, I mean, this is something that we're regulating, I mean, why do we want to regulate somebody's fence? And I mean, do we really have, like I said, do we really have, is this really a big issue case?
You know what, next door, and then all of a sudden, this, this person puts an eight foot fence on their front yard. How is that going to make your property value?
Here, here's, here's what I'll tell you, here's what I'll tell you about my fencing experience in Jackson County.
Oh, yeah, but you're, you're ag.
I, I, I'm ag, but I, we put in a complaint to the Jackson County supervisors because after they moved our road from a level B to a level C. The neighbor moved his fence into the middle of the right way. Made a complaint, obviously prior to our current engineer. We had all three of the county supervisors come out, look at it, talk to the neighbor. County engineer was out there too. They didn't make him move it. Guess what happened? Because he moved it, we had the mirror running across the road. Nobody would do anything and we spent thousands of dollars on sick cats. So here's my point about the fencing, is that the county hadn't done anything prior. Now, today. They are working on that. And when we paid that for our road, the neighbor was forced to finally move the fence back. But like I said. We don't, we don't monitor the right of way fences on every place anymore. And so my point is. We haven't really pushed the issue in this county on fences and limits. Even with ag or residential, so we're putting something in here now. Do we really need this?
Well, for one thing, we can't, we cannot do anything with farm fences there.
No, and, and I, and I.
With R one, and so that's what Lori asked for.
So, but there's also state regulations in it. We already have some state regulations on what's there.
There is a state code, I think it's chapter three eighteen that prohibits obstructions in the public right of way. Which is not a zoning regulation and the county engineer would enforce. And I think we had it in here and he appreciated that we put it in here.
Well, yeah, that, we don't always do that, but, um.
Well, I, I can't speak to how this code gets enforced or how it was enforced in the past. So do have in here is that you can't put your fence in the right way, that was up a couple pages.
Right, no, but what I'm getting at here is. The state of Iowa already has regulations on R one fences, correct?
No.
They do not. Okay, that's what I, that's what I'm getting at, okay. I think.
Partition fences, which are dividing property lines, that's where the township comes in, right? So if you have something in your front yard, it's not, it's not a partition fence, oh, here's the diagram, thanks. So the partition fence is there between the owners on either side, but anything along the street. Then we're, then what we're wanting to make sure is they're not in the right of way or not. Uh, hindering visibility and those are engineering department things that they, they check on for us.
But my question is, is there already something in Iowa law stating that they can't be put in the right way? Other than what we have here?
Yeah, chapter three eighteen, right. Yep. And we have it in this code too, we reference it. And the engineer was really glad we did, he said it's important and, yeah, you don't get to build in the right way. Obstructions in the right of way aren't allowed unless they've been approved by the DOT or the county engineer.
I will say, I did get a call from somebody in the neighborhood, um, that. Is next to the old golf course. So they're, they're in. They're in town and he was trying to figure out the Iowa fence law and how it pertained to him. And he was having trouble deciphering McCoketa's fence regulations. So just even having something written down as guidelines.
I think that's a, that's a really good point. We got into a discussion on this. Uh, the other night, I, I was talking to a city councilman and, and that's a city council person. And, well, and, and she said that is a mess out there. So, hey, even more reason to leave this in. Let's vote.
Well, we certainly can see both points of view, but it is a.
Yeah, so all those in favor of Monica's motion to, I was saying.
I.
Hold on a second, can we clarify what your motion was?
Section thirteen.
Okay.
The whole way, yes.
The permit part.
Yes.
Okay, it's to remove section thirteen. So all the papers say aye.
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 All opposed?
Okay, so, no, yeah, but see, okay, the way this works is because you didn't, I, I, this is parliamentary procedure. This is straight out of Robert's rules of order. There's six of us. The president or the chairman can vote because it affects the outcome, a tie vote, you don't have the majority, you lose.
Yeah, that's true.
That's it, that's it, it's true.
We need four out of.
Thank you, F A. Mine was, I learned most of it in F A.
So there. The rest of the information is, um, a nice summary of the Pennsylaw Law at the State University. Christine, you want to brush up on that?
And then there's the red line, we can skip that, we could go on to the next, we can skip the next section.
Yep, one little sentence became four pages, did it, Becca? Okay, so we've been talking about some of the things that we're going to be looking at in this section, chapter. Chapter two, section two point eight is supplemental regulation, so. Um, we looked at these with the commission in March and in June. Um, and Becca and I have been, um, looking at various resources. Including a webinar for zoning administrators just last month. On the accessory dwelling unit, which is a new state law, that is a little bit confusing. So the sections we're, we're looking at is our ones that we have looked at, but we're going to, so we're going to point out where we made. The updates. So I think we're doing, we're going to do with a clean version. So the visibility at intersections and entrances, we used to have a visibility triangle. We took that language out and we referenced Jackson County Secondary Roads Department entrance policy. And we pulled a. An image out of the Iowa DOT handbook that kind of gives you a sense of what. The engineering office is looking at with a site triangle. This is, this goes right back to them, um, so the zoning administrator does not try to figure this out. And we, and, you know, James took this. So then the next section, um, we talked about more than one principal structure on a lot. And the main, the main thing we added here was that, um. Any required water and sewage disposal facilities shall be installed as approved by the county health department. So that language was, we talked about. These being allowed, meeting regulations, but really making sure the environmental regulations now department one. In place. Right, I don't think we did anything with. If the, anything in public right of way, there's that pilot chuck in grade team. These are, I think these are all pretty much, these didn't change a lot. Off street, off street parking. Um, what we did here was. Pull in things that are, that were in, of all, that were in the definitions or were practiced by. The, the staff, we, we need a site plan to see where parking is going to go. The design standards, um, are actually, were in the definitions. This is where it said, this is where it said, not less than four inches of gravel or fresh stone. So we, I just use it again. I just moved it from definitions to here. For everything. Uh, mentioned that, um. There should be consideration for accessible parking. And there are already, there's already administrative code for that, so we don't have to figure that out because it, sometimes it changes. The location required setbacks, we talked about it in our previous meeting. It's kind of hard not to cross the. It's kind of hard not to cross the segment to get from the road to your house, so the driveway could be in there. I think these are pretty much, and there's a diagram to kind of help.
And those two cars and four campers, people all.
Make lots of fruit truck.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Guess I didn't catch that.
Um, existing farm dollars, the same flag lots, we talked about, oh, we're just gonna send, send that over to the subdivision ordinance. Now, the next, next one, we made some changes here. Accessory dwelling units, so since we met last, the, the diagram there provides us with even more options than we had contemplated in terms of attached or detached. Really, the way Iowa State's diagram is drawn here, there's only one kind that's detached, it's actually, it's not touching at all, as you see in that upper left diagram, and then everything else can be, is a variety of being attached. And so what we're trying to do is, then, let's just work with the code.
So if you had a garage or carport, doesn't show, kind of shows detached, but it's got the, you know, like a covered walkway, would we consider that attached or detached?
Oh, if it's a breezeway, yeah, and it's still open. If it's attached somehow with the breezeway, it's attached, but. So what we did here was wherever we could, we're referencing Iowa code section three, three, one, three, oh, one, subsection twenty seven. I've memorized that because I didn't, I had to rewrite aspires, it's gonna have that plan. So this is actually in, this is, this section of Iowa code is home rule powers, which is an inter, interesting place to put it. But it deals with definitions specific to this type of use, deals with maximum number, maximum size. And so we're referencing those here and anything in our ordinance that might be related. Development regulations, same thing, permit process, same thing. Timing of construction, there isn't, I believe there's anything in the code which has been a bit of a a nut to crack for administrators out attending the webinar and discussing this, but when we looked at it at the staff level, we thought, we, we don't really care which order you plant, which you build first, the accessory dwelling unit that you live in until you built them, single family home you're going to live in or not, but we need you to plan for both of them at the get-go, which is basically what we're, we're asking for here, so plan where those two built, if they're, if they're detached. But in any case, to plan, again, this is guidance for the, the contractor and the property owner. And so that's kind of where we're landing on the ADUs. I think we're, we also have them with the M two R one and K one. Residential. So we feel like we've complying with the code, we're referencing it, because there's some rumblings that it might get amended next year. But we feel like we've got it in a comfortable position, we can manage it. And I don't know how many of these we'll get. But it's there, sorry compliance. I think with this language. So we did, I think we made some changes based on your discussion last time. And then the last one, this used to be a conditional use, and it just seemed like it really fit with the C U, so converting a dwelling to a two-family, just not seem like a good fit here. The red line is. I don't think you want that, it's. Do you have any questions on this? Or otherwise we can run to the. Okay, so the CUP, that is my little shorthand for conditional use permit. Conditional use permit is what we're recommending, special exception default. So renaming those, they would then require, still require a board of adjustment approval, we would call it a conditional use permit. We moved them, they were all, we would all be, they were all in each of the districts, we moved them all to this section two point nine. And because there were some overlaps, like some of them were in more than one zoning district, we tried to consolidate them where we can. One of the things we did, since we're trying not to repeat, repeat over and over, is set up again the same kind of formula, set up in general, general provisions that cover everything. All of the uses on specific conditions for each of the cities. We did pull development regulations out into those charts we looked at earlier. And the off-street parking and stacking and loading requirements are, are also filled out, so what we see is the result of that rearrangement, reorganization. So conditional uses and structures, these general provisions are set up with references back to various chapters that you see here. One is the, the first one's two point one scheduled district regulations is where we have the matrices that tell you where use, what zone it's in, and what it is, is it a conditional use of principal use accessories? Section two point eight, we just looked at. Two, two point nine is this one, it includes sign regulations which can apply to some of these uses at chapter three administration, because we want to make sure there's that compliance with Jackson County State of Iowa federal government regs and four point five conditional use permits, that's the board of adjustments process. And then, any specific requirements. So then, what we did when we set these up is we put them in these broad categories that we're using in section two point one, where we have the matrix, matrix divided by these big categories, so that you can move from that matrix over to this section and kind of keep, it's, it's just easier, I think. Everything's kind of set up the same. The mobile home parks, no changes there, that's your current language. Well, some, some divisions the same, multiple family dwellings was amended, that's the regulations that you settle on. Wherever we can, we're going with referencing an Iowa code, as you see here, with adult and childcare. And then we got into commercial category. So here we have quite a bit of uses in, if there's anything in particular, it'll show up, otherwise they're just named, but they need to go through the conditional use process. Here's a good example, here's, I'm sorry, it's kind of split on the page here, but in A one districts. So the bulk storage and retail distribution of anhydrous ammonia fertilizer in A one has, had a regulation for separation, it was a little bit different in C one and M one. So we've kind of split those out. But it's still, this, this still keeps it a little bit shorter in terms of managing what's, what goes on with that use. Okay, what's your zone, let me see what else I need to worry about. Bulk storage or where wholesale? Those, those all had just, I think they're, they're not saying. They're allowing it in too long, I think.
Can you go back up just a second?
Sure.
So section I. Shouldn't, a dwelling be on that also? You got school, church, or places, public assembly?
Some ways, some of these house. I mean, could be if you, if you feel like you want to have it there. Good to that.
I would like that in there.
Okay. I need notch.
So, so my question is, is, you know, are we grandfathering on, because I can think of at least several actually examples where, you know, if you add that, you know, then there'd be places in violation.
That's just what I was gonna say, in A one districts?
Well.
There's a.
Even if they're C one. Okay, this is an A one.
So this is your current language for these two, for these districts, A one doesn't mention dwelling. C one and M one do mention a dwelling.
Okay. Yeah, where I'm thinking of probably is C one or M one. They would have to be, to be, you know, the fertilizer plant that they are.
So the reason I think, the, the reason I think it's in C one and M one is we do, they, they are allowed to have dwellings on the site for the owner or operator.
Okay.
In A one, that, that isn't the case, but certainly could be. It's however you wanna, however you want to structure it.
Yeah, well, like I said, I was thinking, if, if this is A one, I, you know, I suppose there's some out there guys that are getting big enough that maybe they have some storage of their own on their own A one farm, but it's not, you know, what I was thinking was examples of like, you know, suppliers like in Everhard or in, you know, or Ag Advantage or something like that. Yeah, so they would be C one or M one with their, so. I'm, I'm just worried about.
A neighbor.
You know, some people there to wake your lot, and then the neighbor comes in and wants to put an hydra's tank storage right by their house, when we're getting big enough, that could happen. I mean, I, but some people.
I, I don't think, I don't think we want to add dwelling to the A one. Can you put in non-owner dwelling? Use the same language.
I, I don't think we want to, I don't think we want to do that, because this depending on your bulk storage. I mean, I can think of one up by a lot. Their house across the road, that's the owner's house, so it's the owner's house.
I, I can see Brian's point, I really can, that, you know, farmer gets big enough, he thinks he's gonna put up some storage for, so he can buy anhydrous and, and fertilizers in bulk, and he does it, you know, within a five hundred foot of the neighbor's house, even though, you know, because it's, you know, that, that would be a concern, because he starts bleeding lines off where you have an accident.
Yeah.
But, but the other part of it is, depending on how big they are, there's gonna be regulations from the state. I'm trying to remember.
There probably would be regulations from the state, but that doesn't include us from putting something into it.
But I think there may already be something in with the state is what I'm getting at. And so.
You're saying it's not necessary?
I don't think it's necessary, because I think the state has already got the regulations there, I think that's what, I think we need to check.
Can we, yeah, find that on the job?
Yeah, see, see what they're, I think it's a very valid concern.
I, I don't disagree.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll check and see if it regulates separation from existing dwellings.
I mean, obviously, we do have it in for C one and M one, which makes sense, but so we want to make sure like the non-owner dwelling, as opposed to just any dwelling.
Right.
On state law. But see, the other part, but see, here's the other part of that, if you've got, if you've got a big farmer that's got somebody, a neighbor sells out two acres for somebody to build a house. If the farmer comes in to put in a storage facility after the dwelling is built, I think, I think that there are state regs on that, and I'm.
Okay, well, we'll check on that.
Make sure.
Yeah, we do need to make sure that I.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking of the educator's license, like, I just studied for that there's something.
Oh, okay.
There's something that's in there, so I, I don't want, I just put them in on this.
Yeah, that's great, extraordinary.
Pretty good, yeah.
Um, let's see, let's keep working through these, the commercial cell tower. We talked about this at a meeting, we divided it up into existing and new, and so this language was one, it's kind of long. It's something that Lori had, had us work up and we looked at, I can't remember which, I mean, um, April. So I had to go, yeah, and, and so I have not changed anything in here. The, and so the way it says for existing, the way it says for new is same as you saw last time, but this is a good time to, let's just go through it carefully, as this still all what you want, so I believe the definitions come out of, yeah, they come out of the Iowa code. HC which is what regulates Iowa South Side, that's the Iowa South Side Act, so then. Then when you get to the third one, they are no closer to a, yeah, no closer to a dwelling, and so this is some of your current regulation, and then also some of the things that you talked about adding, like notification in one mile, four hundred foot.
I have one question on this, because are we talking about the height of the tower minus the top antenna, or does that include like the top antenna?
It's however Iowa code HC defines it.
Okay.
I'm, I don't need a lot of pull anything else out.
No, I just couldn't remember, because I know we've talked about this before, but I couldn't remember on that.
I, and I would, I would go look at that code. I, I didn't put it in here, we could, we can double check on what it says. I think that's my thought, it's it's in that code, I'll double check that too. So then, four hundred was what Lori recommended after checking, that seems to be what most of the cell towers are, four hundred. New, again, what we're using here is a definition of Iowa code HC. And then this was language that Lori asked for, and we reviewed, I think it's your A one meeting. And there was some discussion about the lighting, discontinuance, catastrophic decommissioning, would use the Jackson County wind ordinance. The one mile location, I think. Home industry, you removed that. So that's the same language as you saw. Which we've related back to that new, or maybe to the Iowa code regulations for home base business. So this one you are, if you've already looked at and approved. Wind energy, okay. Recreation category, we looked at these when we're doing the campground zoning. So this is, this sort of, this is a refresher of what you already were done. I think the only new one is private camp. You know, because it discussed. And that's coming up, because these are in alphabetical order. So private campground. The board of adjustment had a case on a private campground. What we've suggested is that be on less than five acres, there being, and the board. What we've suggested is that be on less than five acres, there being, and the board conditions included these two, there'd be no onsite sewage disposal, and there shall be only non-commercial operation for use by family in sense of the owner without payment or other consideration. Um, we will be asking the board at their meeting next week. Once again, this is, this is okay with that, but we would also like to know all the commission philosophy about this. This was a case in which a gentleman wanted to put up a campground for his family to come and stay on his property, and there were, uh, concerns of, um, vocalized by neighbors. Um, primarily at the meeting, but I don't know if any comments in writing, mostly they were there, so. Um, these seem to be some things that would, that the board felt would distinguish it from commercial operations. Keep it small, no onsite disposal, keep it family, that's no commercial. Oh, more changes there, that's your current regs. Um, the bucked equipment, use in summer camps. Okay, in the industrial category. This is your current language. Um, debt processing has a placeholder with the ordinance. Um, manufacturing processing, current ordinance. Uh, lighting, right ordinance. Ready mix, same. So waste same, current ordinance. Okay, um, special requirements for industrial, commercial and industrial districts, these were these are things, to be quite honest with you, I wasn't quite sure what else to do with, so I left them there. This is, this is current language. But addressing lighting, in terms of that going down to adjacent residential property, which can, you know, source complaints. That won't confine, but it can be. The water supply, disposal, um. Uh, I'd left these in because they are in, and I'm not sure whether they should be taken out or not, but I decided to err on leaving them in, so you could look at them again. Sometimes it's nice to have this stuff, if you're the zoning administrator, you can kind of give people some guidance over what, like, how their site should be set up for. What kind of regulations they need to be thinking about for longer, so with a industrial, commercial operation. Okay. Okay. Last time we looked at a section two point one, schedule of district regulations, and this is where there were a lot of matrices about what are the different kinds of uses and that sort of thing, and Becca had some cases come up, and we walked through them, and we decided let's add some more to that description. And so that's the first three pages, and then I went to try to deal with encroachments and setbacks, which your ordinance refers to casually with about seven words, and leaves us with no direction at all. So, we have a whole section for that now. So, if we look at this, um, this is the clean version, this is, um, leaving the comments. So, section two point one, we saw this, but what we added in the schedule of districts is we also um, added some mention about the planned unit development, the PUD district, and by the way, what are we doing with these symbols? Oh, they're gonna be on your official zoning map. I know this may seem kind of oversimplifying, but if you're reading a zoning ordinance for the first time, it's not overly simplified, it's like, oh, that's what they do. Okay. That's how we find out, so the next section B, um, this was something that actually Becca and I started creating the table so that we could figure out what's a use, what's a structure, how does this work, how am I explaining this to people, and so we just ended up saying, golly, we need a chart for ourselves, let's leave it in there for people to look at, so we're trying to give people examples without being overly, giving a whole bunch of examples of the difference between a use and a structure, which can be very, there it seems intuitive, but when you're regulating them and trying to explain to the public, I'm sure it helps. Let's see, just make sure we talk about the planned unit development there, um, and then, then four, I think that's unchanged, we just oh, I don't, so under principal uses and structures, yeah, we can go down to number E, or letter B, excuse me. Your ordinance defines accessory structure and use, but not principal use and structure, so. We, we, together, we looked through and researched, how can we say this simply, uh, trying to help people understand what this is, and so this is the language we, we've added here. What's a principal use, what's a principal structure, because it can be confusing. Um, accessory use had it, had a definition, but we, again, we added a little bit more language. Again, just, we're looking at this, this is the, once you get pen, you have to watch, chapter two is laying out for you all these terms you're gonna keep seeing over and over again throughout chapter two in terms of uses and structures, and so just trying to, um, provides a guide, provide a little more language in order to help understand what we're, what we're, what we're looking at here. Um, conditional uses, kind of just the same thing, what is that conditional use, and I'm trying to help people understand um, what it is. Again, just for greater, greater clarity. So I think those are the first three pages for any changes, right? So let's see what's coming up next then. Okay, so this is a new section, you have not seen this, and the idea here is that all the information about measuring lot area and width wasn't really there. Or it was tucked off somewhere in the rig, in the definitions, and it was, um, it's, it's a mess, it is very difficult to, um, to figure out, and in many cases, it didn't say anything, so it was impossible to figure out. So what we did here is, okay, let's, again, same process, let's talk about not only what is minimum lot area width, but how do you measure it, and what are the components? And so we're using, wherever we can, we're using your existing definitions, or we're modifying them to hopefully be more helpful. And then we're introducing pictures. So there's your lot lines, there's how you calculate your area with, with lot and depth, um, there's different types of lots, which means they're gonna have different setbacks, here's a drawing of what they look like and a description of what they are.
Really concerned.
We go to the next, that's the next one. Um, how do you measure these, and so, um, we looked at lots of different drawings, and, um, what I liked about this one is it gives you the nice neat standard line. And then it gives you the irregular shaped lots, and so you, you see as well as it's, it's described, how we're figuring out setbacks, there's a picture and there's a description that follows. So the descriptions, this is where we start to get into the questions that came about the beginning of all. How are we figuring out setbacks? And so what, what we're doing is, we're measuring from that property line, which we just described that up under lot area and so forth, and we're coming to the closest point um, of, on the structure. And what happens is, if you're on a corner lot, or a double frontage lot, or a flag lot, there are different ways those get measured, we also have this little this little item that I'm calling o- owner's choice on corner and frontage lots, typically, we would um, have the, have the lot set up a certain way, but owners can pick if they have a corner lot, which one they want to have as their front yard, because a front yard setback goes bigger than a side yard setback. And by doing that, we can avoid people going to the Board of Adjustment. But we had to remember that, because it's way in the end of the ordinance, in the definition section, where you would never think to look unless you remembered it was there. So again, trying to make it organized, make it so the zoning administrator, I mean, I can't tell you how many times Lori emailed me inside, why did I miss that, and I'd have to go.
A man had to put it in there.
Yeah, I'm so, I don't know who put it in there, but, um, you, so, so the idea was.
Probably right, we gave it to Andy.
Whoever put it there, um, that's great, it's a great idea, because it helps us get people what they want without going to the board, but we have to remember to find it.
Or until Lori, all of the zoning administrators were men, so that's why. That was one for Stata.
Oh, that's true, right, Christina, yeah. So.
But it was done prior to Christina, it was done.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we also talk about, we talk about site and where's setbacks, we talk about them when they're on a street side, and then we use a picture to say what were we talking about, and we use color, and we try to help people understand where things are.
This area is my most favorite, all the ordinance. This is the daily, day to days, if somebody's just filling out an easy application for permit, these are the questions that they have, and it was so hard to explain any of it to them. How could you explain any of it to them before? And now, and right here with.
And Becca would go to the regulations, and the regulations would contradict themselves. It was, yeah.
Even with moving into the online, people would get irritated if they're, if a new online system, and so then they take out the frustrations and say, well, I can't figure out my setback, well, you'd have to give me your setbacks on paper or online, but.
I shouldn't say this, but all the permitting you've done, you know, online, and when we were, when I was doing our well permit or receptive permit, one of the must have receptive permit. I think I have three open permit requests on there because I couldn't figure out how to get back into the one that I had started. Just saying.
You, you were clear, hey, it's getting better, it's getting a lot better.
Thanks for being our test case.
Sure.
Well, and, and, um, I, Becca showed me an email from an attorney. Couldn't, could not read our charts, well, that's because the charts aren't there. They're just a mishmash of development regulations that get schmushed into something else. Of course you can't figure it out, we barely can figure it out. This is trying to do just what Becca said. Give me something that I can walk through, and I can look for it, I can help people find it. So that's what we're doing here, we're using, taking terms that we use out of the definitions, putting them in here with diagrams at the beginning of the ordinance. Um, and without some, just trying this about, just about any kind of crazy lot uh, setup you might have, let's throw it in there. Just, who knows, it might come up next week, might come up next year. So, this little comment says, box here, this is the one that gave me heartburn. So it talks about the protection of the usual uncovered steps, uncovered balconies, or uncovered porch, that's all the direction there is on allowed encroachments. And what I mean by allowed encroachment is you have a roof, it has an eve, it has a gutter. That gutter and eve are closer to the lot line than the wall and foundation of your building, so then and something that, that overhang is something that generates this idea of being an encroachment.
That is very, very important to have in the zoning regulations, and I will tell you that my son had an issue in Clayton County with overhangs, just.
I have had people had to get up and saw off the overhang.
That was.
Brand new ground.
That was discussed.
Hmm.
It did not happen, but that was.
Um, I, I had to make somebody do it. It, some days it's not fun to be a zoning administrator, let's go to the next page, is there the diet, that diagram, but I was, so, okay. I gotta get up and get browsing. So here's your, here's your house, here's the, here's the, or do you have a pointer? Oh, shoot, no, see this little line here, yeah, there's that, yeah, so. Right now, the ordinance says, oh, you can do this, you can have something like steps. Until you cover them, well, what does that mean? Put a roof over them? Well, how, who would want to put a roof over, then we're into this whole mess of encroachments, so here's what we, here's what we decided to do, we created a table using this diagram, so can you just put it up? Well, can we keep that in there? So the typical features we have are accessibility, fire escape, stairways, um, open air access, porches, steps, stoops, um, ramps, or they're enclosed, they have a roof, they have walls on them. Architectural features, skis, runners, shutters, balconies. Add great features, these could be things like your HBAC units. Swimming pool, they're at, they're sitting that great, fences and hedges, landscaping. Um, driveway and parking, so we already looked at fences and hedges, and so they have their own section, we already talked about driveway and parking, they have their own section. So then what A is, is the list of those features, B. Column B is, how far can they approach into the setback? And so, our choices, we kept pretty simple, either three feet or none at all, or if it's landscaping, doesn't really have a limit. What's the minimum distance it needs to be from a lot line to for most of these, or it has to be the required setbacks. Or really no limit if it's landscaping, however, the column D, this takes us right back to that right of way question. And that section two point eight A is that visibility those site triangles. So what we don't want to have happen is things encroaching into the setbacks, encroaching to the, and then they approach into the right of way, so this is trying to make sure that doesn't happen. See, what's it? See, how do we do this, we go back to that table? Oh, we gotta go. Oh, we gotta go. I'm sorry, you gotta go back a little bit. So here's what we decided. If you like your your thoughts on this. If you have. Number one, all principal accessory, conditional, temporary uses and structures. In any zoning district on lots planet on or after May sixth. Nineteen seventy-six, the day we had zoning. You have to meet the setbacks. We're not dealing with encroachments. Meet the setbacks. Can't meet the setbacks, then you go to the board of adjustment where you get it, we must straighten. Why do we think that? Well, after that date, we require two acres of land. In A one. Twelve thousand square feet. Is that right?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand square feet in R one and if you're on a community well or subject twelve thousand. And so our thought is you can meet the setbacks, get a lot of land area. And I would say that's reasonable because I worked in a city where the lots were five thousand and twenty-five hundred square feet. And people could live in them and meet their setbacks. So I think on two acres or twenty thousand square feet. I think this is reasonable and we have avenues. If it's not gonna work for somebody. Land and land and land, that's why we have the wavelength of areas. What's the next one? Okay, now, if you were on a lot planted before zoning. Then we use that chart. For. Principal accessory, conditional, temporary uses. Now, if you have accessory or temporary uses in A one or R one on lots. Planted. Before we had zoning. You don't, you still don't get to encroach. You have to comply. Rebecca's thought, Rebecca's thought here is, okay. I think again, I think I missed something there. Now, if it's accessory or temporary in A one or R one. You wanted them to meet the setbacks. That's what you talked about. Again, because. They've got the land. Except this, this says before. I did this one at midnight. So I think, I think my mistake, my mistake is that one should read if it was. Planted after. So yeah, again, same reason, you're on the lots planet where we have zoning, they're bigger lots. So my my mistake, that should say.
She's gonna change number three to say after.
Take number threes.
Let's see.
Number three, they must comply with the.
So the idea was if you're on this, if you're using the standard development regulations in A one and R one. You do not, there are no allowed encroachments. Right, that's how we.
Principal accessory, temporary.
Yeah, standard, which is after. But if you're using the alternative, you qualify for the alternative, that's before. So we'll get it straightened out. The wording is a little misranch. The idea was. That if you're on those lots after we had zoning and you have the room, we don't really need to worry about encroachments. For one thing, it's so, it's so much more work to try and figure out and explain it to people. So we're trying to keep that into the alternative lots, the smaller lots, like leisure lake and dressler. Um. But I think with this diagram and the chart. It makes it easier to understand than the words, the usual. Uncovered steps. That didn't really help us much at all. We didn't know what that meant. So we're, and we, after we get through this chart where it lists the features. Um, we have a list of quick. References and what did we mean when they said those? So. Does that be the next question? And so there there it is. Um, and then building heights over in the definitions and so we moved that out. Um. And then we wanted to um also add. Once you get these setbacks, you have to keep them. You can't encroach on them. You can't not maintain them. You have to. Um. You have to have some continuing maintenance. Or we'll be back in to see the administrator or the board for a waiver or variance. And overall, we'd like people to maintain their property, so. Again, none of this pertains to um the farm exam, but. Um, it does pertain to everything else, so. We will, I think we feel that this is. This is, you said this was your favorite section now. This is where a lot of it comes in.
Right, yeah.
So really from those first couple of pages that we looked at to this, this new new section we added, the idea is. It's exactly what Becca said. That is the day to day figuring things out, explaining it to people, trying to lay it out. Um, using your existing rights as much as possible when they're scarce and. There's not much guidance, trying to provide guidance with tables and charts and explanations, so. Are you all okay with that approach? Okay, so chapter six is definitions. Um, thanks to Sandra. The definitions refer to Iowa code whenever possible. You wouldn't believe how many things have a definition in Iowa code. Um, I'm happy to go through these with you, but you have seen them.
Yeah.
And you've seen them in reports with the revisions. Um, the biggest change here is wherever I could find it in the. Uh. Uh, code reference, I substituted it or added it. And we tried to, uh, the the other thing, full disclosure, there were, there was, there was a whole section on yards. It's gone. They have been banished. And the recommendation of the new administrator. It's a, it's, it's another word for something. And it was so, I, my eyes were crossing and I. Asked Becca, do you think we could do this about talking about yards? And she said, yes.
And when people say, when I, we ask for setbacks on everything. And then they're like, well, where's my side setback? I'm like. Well, your side yard. Look, then you can like, but otherwise. What's my yard? What's my setback?
And it just, it's just easier, the diagram shows your front yard, which is a common term. Oh, I'm going out to mow the front yard. I'll be back for lunch. Well, good for you.
I've been out of too long. Yeah, that's right. Exactly.
Again, and the, so I don't, I don't, there's a lot of definitions, but. Um, the idea that we could shorten them up and that we could pull things out and put it into the regulatory. Areas that are having regulations in here. Um, I think we're, we'll work better for you with for your customers.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Because we won't remember. Tom won't be here forever.
Well, when I, when I was training Lori, I would, I give, she would send me questions and I would say, I'm gonna give you, give you the same two questions back. What's the zoning? And what does the definition say? And because your regulations are in the definitions. What I learned early on is it's pretty much assumed it's A one unless she says it's something else. But um, those are the things that I still, like Becca has a case, you know, okay, what's the zoning? That's automatic, rate check the zoning because. The regulations can change.
But now the regulations are not just in the definition.
No, no, they're not because that is, and there were, there were good things in those definitions. But you have to, that's not, that's not where I would recommend they be. If you're trying to explain things to people, it's a little easier to have them in. Also in that initial chapter as well. So.
We're in a matrix.
We're in a matrix or a table or a drawing. So I feel like we, we, we don't need to show you the red line on this. It's. It's amazing to me how many things had on Iowa code reference and so actually your definitions got shortened that way.
I'm not surprised the Iowa code, the administrative rules spell out just about. Everything.
Just about, just about. It was a weird thing that we couldn't find a code for. Or some difference. And so we used. Okay, so. Our game plan then would be to try to do a public hearing on this. Um. Our thought was that we would not review any red line. Um, we would use clean copy with the final revisions based on the board of adjustment meeting next week and your direction at this meeting. And you still have a chance to say, oh, hey, wait a minute, this should say this or that, or this should be gone and all that in the public hearing. Um. Is there anything else you would like us to do to try to make it easier for you?
Won't sound. I just have a question. I know at one meeting we weren't like checking over the grammar part of things, but for example. Um. On, so way back when we started here, chapter four. There's one sentence that reads for conditional use permits, including mail notice to all. Um, owners of record within five hundred of the subject property.
So you're finding typos?
Yeah. So I, I mean, I know that was not something in one of the meetings that we were supposed to point out during the meeting, but I didn't know that we're getting to the end.
I need that help. So which, which, which one are you in? So we look, um, chapter, did you say chapter four?
Chapter four. So it was.
Five hundred feet, I'd say, under letter three.
Yes.
So number three, sorry.
Right, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I taught some of these myself and so. Yeah, we absolutely, if you see um typos, get them to Becca and she'll get them to me. Um, we want this to look professional and. Typos can sometimes give the appearance that you weren't being professional or thorough. And so I don't want those. Happen to happen. I wanna get this ready for the public and the board, so. Yes, editors welcome. Um, the other thing that we are working on is this county attorney's office is reviewing the ordinance. Um, I'm hoping that they'll be able to be finished so we can do the hearing in August. So we can do the hearing in September. Um, at your next meeting, so we're working through that. Becca gave them the whole spiel and big fighter, so.
I'm thinking in one of the developing papers, the last meeting noted or in the developing paper, uh, one of the notices. It had um. Either the date or the time was missing, so I don't know if you need to go back and make sure something just didn't get. Like marked off and not added back in again.
Right, and I don't get the developing paper to double check it, but I might have to, I was thinking the other day. Cause we always get them, McCocado one, and then we double check and make sure it's been in, but I don't.
It was in the developing paper for this.
You could ask them to send you a proof of publication.
They always do, but then.
But it's, oh, but it's. After you're already voted.
So you'd like a proof before publication.
Yeah.
Yeah, they should send you proof before it goes in the paper to prove it.
If you want to send you the actual article that was in the papers.
That it was in there.
Yeah. Or invoice.
But they should do a proof of it before it's published to verify that everything is correct.
If you wanted to do that, you probably want to get things every, maybe a week.
A week even earlier, yeah. So that they can just.
Well, but if, but if they cut pay something, it's missing something, then. It's just, it's easy to miss that.
Okay, so you're, you're editor for sure. Uh, any other questions or suggestions for the, we went to the hearing in September?
September.
So where will it be?
I think you could do it here. We're thinking we're gonna have this kind of an audience.
It's got wind and solar and battery.
The other thing is, are you feeling? Really good about this. We are taking anybody not complying, not compliant, we're not making them not performing. Um, we're trying to make things easier. We're trying to make things clearer. Um. We're trying to make sure we comply with codes at the state level. Um, we, we feel like it's not controversial like your last ordinance.
Really?
We're hoping it's not burning things up. And that's what I found when we were doing stuff to make it go easier. Usually people don't come in and say. Great job and line up to suck. They, they just don't. So I feel really good. You've done a really great job discussing this and. I feel like we, and the board of adjustment as well, helping us make a better ordinance.
Thank you for your important thoughts.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I covered yet.
Okay, so we probably move on to item number six, giving the commission. Items from the staff.
Next meeting. Public hearing, September fifteenth.
Seven P M.
Seven P M.
There's nothing else, go. The dean of legislative adjournment. Move. All the favor.
Thank you very much.
Decision we changed to six o'clock in November.
October, I believe, over, yeah.
I thought it was, I thought it was November because October is. Well, you know, it just depends on what's going on, you know, like my or my being doing, whether it's seven or six.